In order. And uh. We'll start with the public allegiance then move to the hearing. What allegiance is required of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all? As I was saying, we're gonna open a public hearing for the comp plan in science. Go.
Mr. Chair, we have the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee and your liaison here tonight and a business council, Donna Larch, and Donna has a presentation put together.
Awesome.
For us, um, I think she's gonna go through that. Through the clip.
So has anyone, was anyone not at that, the meeting in June? Because I can just skip to the end if you want, or I can run through it again. If you want a refresher on what's in there, I'm happy to do that, or I can just skip to what's changed.
I'll ask the public, does any of the public need it run through?
Oh, I just had some questions actually on the major differences at a glance. I just wanted to make sure that that was public, you know, publicly put out what I saw when I ran through it. I did have ten different sections where I made notations, but so whenever that's open to. They didn't know if you wanted to feedback section by section or in totality. And then, of course, I did have questions on eight different sections.
Okay.
So I'd like to just start up a couple of things. So one is because of the state law and the way we have to do the election piece of this, we put it out and because of the format we have here with the absentee, the version that was out there is uh, the adjusted version, which was approved by the state is out there. Uh, is what everyone is gonna be voting on with the sixteenth. Two things we're hoping to accomplish tonight was answer any questions that there are and two make some additional notes so that that way an addendum or whatever can be done by public vote at a later point for what we need to do because we can't, we've been told we can't revise what's going on the sixteenth because people are already voting on it. And I know that's might be frustrating, but I guess that's no different than when you guys do the budget, that second public hearing reading is where you go over for informational purposes and those pieces. So we're here to actively gather any of the input, discuss it, and then um, look at whether we need to put together an additional addendum to be voted on. I think it'd be pretty tight to get it done for November, but probably for next June if there's something that's material different. The nice thing is that the state came back and said that the version that we did put out published, uh, they've approved. So if everything passes with the voters on the sixteenth, we have an updated plan, which I think gives us a leapfrog from twelve, thirteen years ago forward. Is it not perfect? Probably not, much like when we passed chapter thirty-eight, we're now looking at those revisions with the side section and a few other things uh, going back. So I just kinda wanted to preface that, but we're definitely excited to hear any additional comments that people have.
So, so are you, with all that said, or do you think Donna should run through this in its entirety?
I, I personally don't unless Stephanie just walked in. I don't know if she's had a chance to review everything from our July there, but if not, then I'd rather devote the time to comments and input that we could get from the public. Unless you're opposed to that.
Mark?
Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, you know, there aren't many public here. Uh, I don't know if the public's not interested or if some of them are relying on the town public videos to inform themselves where these meetings are at five o'clock, you know, a lot of working people just can't make that work. So.
But I mean, we do have other meetings recorded.
I don't need you to go through the whole thing again for me, but I don't know.
I'm not trying to complicate this, guys. I'm sorry. Would it be better for you, Etha, because you have notations? Better for you to go to present your stuff first, or would you like Donna to?
And that's entirely up to the group collectively. All I thought even for the purpose of the public hearing portion was as somebody who wasn't involved in the process, I went through both copies and I have quick notes of let's start, new chapters and topics in twenty twenty-five, healthcare is a new standalone chapter, climate, climate change impacts and adaptations, expanded regional coordination and implementation chapters, and the twenty twenty-twelve plan had outdoor recreation, agriculture, and forestry fiscal capacity as separate sections, twenty twenty-five reorganizes this under broader topics. Is this all correct?
Yes.
That's what I have for the ten sections because I thought that was pertinent for people who may not have been through the process as somebody who did take them side by side and went, this is what I see as change.
Right, and we tried.
And if I missed anything, I thought maybe perhaps somebody who was here could say, oh, and in addition to.
Right.
Because we all know how this goes. This is the public meeting. I just wanna make sure that somewhere on record it says this is the change from this to this.
Right, and we have the red line so that try to make it easy to see those changes, so.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, so.
I'd say let it go. It's up to you.
Is that what you wanna do?
That's entirely up to you. If you don't mind.
Well, I realize that. I'm just trying to make.
I do have the ten sections. I have them.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we let Etha go through her notes and then if you wanna skip ahead and give us the update, but uh, or what, like we were talking about before. Go ahead, Etha.
Thank you so much. So that was, did I spit all that out too bad? That was clear for the new chapters and topics in twenty twenty-five. It's okay.
Right, so there were, there is a merging of a bunch of them into the economy and yes, those the climate and the healthcare are me chapter.
Perfect. Um, so the vision for Rangeli, um, twenty twelve emphasizes on preserving character, managing growth, protecting resources, and sustaining the small town feel while twenty twenty-five adds climate adaptation, healthcare, remote work, broadband renewable energy, and expanded tourism and arts. More detailed vision for Rangeli and aquatic villages with emphasis on walkability, infill housing, and economic diversification. Did I catch?
Yep.
The, the update on the vision.
Correct.
Okay. Population and demographics, the twenty twelve, the population was eleven sixty-eight, focus on retirees, seasonal homes and slow growth. Twenty twenty-five, population is twelve seventy with an older median age fifty-six and a half versus fifty-one point four in twenty-ten. It acknowledges the negative natural change, more deaths than birth, COVID-nineteen impacts, remote work migration, and seasonal population now of fifty-three hundred to ten thousand at peak.
Right.
That's the chunk of the difference in the population and demographic changes, right?
Yes.
Okay. Housing section, I noticed that twenty twelve concerned about affordability, seasonal conversions, and aging housing stock. Twenty twenty-five seems to have focus on housing for employees, seniors, and first-time buyers, suggest density increases near sewer grants, public-private partnerships, ordinance reform, and workforce housing solutions.
Yep.
Economy, the twenty twelve um, seemed to be tourism, forestry highlighted. Twenty twenty-five still has the tourism driven but expands to remote work, broadband-enabled jobs, renewable energy, solar wind storage, manufacturing potential, and arts culture as economic drivers.
And building.
Yeah. Did you um, have anything for section four?
No, no, these are, these are just the sections that I saw, kind of the big.
Okay, yeah.
Like I said, it was just a shot. Everybody might wanna know what.
Right.
And as a layperson who didn't have any involvement in the process itself, this is, these are the things that jumped out at me as insignificant. What I saw is major differences in this new plan.
So it, and then, so forestry obviously at this point, so is not becoming, might be concerned as, or not considered as a driver anymore?
Well, forestry is part of, is now, is not a separate chapter, but it's part of the econo, the economy chapter because it is an economic driver. And um.
We're trying to get all the.
Me, I, me, I.
We moved everything under economy because forestry really didn't need to sit separate.
I understood that.
It's not given any less weight, but we just decided all the economic drivers should be in the economy section. So we're just trying to clean, clean that up.
Thank you.
And the agriculture was also added to the economy section because it is another, it is another economic force and the plan in uh, the twenty twelve plan, at that time, there were, it stated that there were no farms and now we found, we found a few farms, not all of them were within the confines of Rangeli, but within the region and that it is definitely, you know, people are making more of a living at it and they um, had some things to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
That includes like maple syrup, honey, those kind of things.
Right.
Although honey I can attest is not a profitable.
It stinks. Uh, yeah, Etha, do you have more?
I just a couple more sections and then I do have question page two, but whenever that opens up. This was more just, like I said, I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of grasped the big changes between the two plans. Um, transportation in twenty twelve, basic focus was on roads, pedestrian safety, airports, and snowmobile ATV trail systems. In twenty twenty-five, we've added public employee transit needs, possible connections to Farmington, and more attention to walkability in the village. Okay. Natural resources in twenty twelve, there was a strong focus on water quality, forestry, and outdoor recreation. Twenty twenty-five adds climate resilience, renewable energy, sightings, low-impact development standards, and emphasis on commercially adding value to woods products locally.
Yeah, um, yeah.
And the climate was required.
The, the climate, the climate is a separate chapter. Um, and the um, and the natural resources, the natural resources are a little bit heavier in the enforcement. Um, and developing ordinance language and the enforcement of it. The both, you know, the enforcement and the inspection. So um, yes.
The public services and facilities in twenty twelve, standard review of municipal facilities. In twenty twenty-five, it's expanded to include healthcare access, emergency response capacity, and regional service demands due to Rangeli's role as a service center.
Uh, slight change to that, and that came as the, after the meeting, um, that was held in June. And the healthcare, the healthcare odd uh, piece was taken out. You'll see that right now that is struck through in that public services chapter. And instead, that's why there's a whole new chapter. Because there was some discussion about its importance, its importance.
Well, Sarah knew in twenty twenty-five. Sorry, that was minimal.
Yes, yes.
So page, page six and also two, we clarified a paragraph of the cost-benefit analysis being done because it was a request that we look at everything on a regional, but we clarified the language to say all public services of those kinds should be evaluated on a regular basis, whether it's fire safety to an outlying municipality or unorganized territory, that the cost-benefit analysis should be done, giving the select board the opportunity to say when they're budgeting each year within those capacities and they can say, is it still worth it for us to do this extended coverage or not, so that they can have the ability to opt out or take on a new regional partner?
And then, of course, my next note was that the healthcare was the new, uh, as a new standalone in the twenty twenty-five, recognizing the remoteness as both an asset and an obstacle, and that the goals are to expand services, support aging in place, improve emergency response, and attract healthcare professionals.
Right.
Okay. And then the last thing is the climate, um, also another new section in twenty twenty-five, response to recent extreme storms, flooding, and energy challenges. Um, policies assesses vulnerabilities, encourage energy conservation, invest in renewable energy, and adapt infrastructure. Okay. So overall theme, the twenty twenty-five plan was about preserving character, managing slow growth, and protecting resources. It seems like the twenty twenty-five plan is about adapting to change, climate, demographics, housing shortages, healthcare access, broadband-driven migration, and evolving tourism and economy.
Yes, well-maintaining character too.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
Great, great notes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that sums it up pretty well.
So having probably a pretty good little insert for certain people to really digest, actually.
Yeah, great.
In all honesty.
Do you wanna build on that?
Um, there's one thing that I do wanna put, I wanna put this map up. I wanna talk just a little bit about this because we um, at the last meeting, it was really hard to see this map because this right here was shown in red, but when we talk about the future land use plan and where we think that, that um, there's opportunities to have a higher density development, basically, the density that's allowed here would also be allowed in this area here. So it's right here, it's right here, and then there's a new commercial, this is commercial over here. So at the last meeting, this was not real easy to see. And now with your great new screens, and we changed the color of that, I think it's much easier to see. So I wanted to point that out to you. Um, and then, as Chris said, uh, we were granted consistency by the state, so that's a process that you go through. And they just, well, the state reviews them. And their review is just to make sure that you've hit all the points that you need to hit in, in the planning process. And that consistency is what's really important for um, getting state grants. So when they say, when, when state grant funding becomes available and that there'll be usually a section on the application and it'll say, is your plan consistent? Been found to be consistent and you say yes, and they'll lock the date. And I can't remember the date, but there's a letter and the town has it, and that is the date that goes on those grant applications. So that letter was one of those things. Um, that letter is a letter that gets its own file, I think, in bold type. Um, because it's an important letter. And so when we went through that process, they had some changes that they wanted to see. And nothing of it was of any substance, like for example, they wanted us to include the existing zoning map, an existing land use map, which in, even in their comments, they said you can use the one from twenty twelve. So, you know, we put those in, they wanted to see, um, they wanted to see what the town was gonna do in terms of implementation. And uh, we took a slightly different approach this time than what we had done. The last plan had two columns added to each one of the recommendations and it said who was gonna do what and when and, and what kind of a priority it was. And we were, the committee was quite intentional about that in saying that we wanted the, the, the Board of Selectmen to be the driver here. Because we wanted you to have a strong role in the process, not that you would be doing all of the work, but that you would be delegating the work so that you always knew what was going on with the plan, so that you never had any surprises. Um, because I, I have seen situations in the past where all of a sudden the legislative body is surprised, didn't realize that someone was working on some ordinance amendments or something like that, so. And, and so the state agreed that that would be okay. And, and what we did put in there was um, just a broad statement saying that the future land use plan. So that's this, that's making amendments to, it's making amendments to the zoning map to allow higher density residential in some places. It also puts a, a higher priority on getting done the housing, the economy, and the natural resources sections. So um, it, it, it places them higher. So um, those were the changes that we needed to get to the state consistency. Um, we did that, we got it, there, oh, there's also a goal in there, it's an advisory goal, um, that seventy-five percent of your capital improvements funding every year be spent in growth areas. It's advisory, no one's going to be reviewing that, you're not gonna have to justify it every year. But when you look at the growth areas in the downtown and, and where you spend money, that tends to be, I, I think you could probably meet that, that goal. Um, but you're not gonna have to keep track of it. Um, and then there were a number of changes in the numbering, the chapters, and all of that stuff, all of that changed too. Uh, where, where it was necessary. And you have a town meeting scheduled for September sixteen.
Yeah. But a lot of work, guys. It's much appreciated. Etha?
I just had a quick question. Was that the map that you plan to present with this plan to be adopted at the same time? Or will that follow the, the adoption process for changes in your zoning map?
There is a map, that there is a map that's out there right now.
That's not that one.
It is this one, but it, the color is different. It's black. Um, I changed the color on this just to show it to you. It's red. The one that shows up on the map is red. Um, we put it in black. I mean, I can't make a change to that one. Um, but I did wanna show it so it was easier to read.
So which one is being adopted with the plan? That's all I'm.
The, the red one will be adopted. The lines are the same.
I'm confused on that.
Hmm?
I'm confused on that.
Okay.
Well, the packet that went out shows it with the black.
The packet that went out.
So we're not moving any property lines, but you changed the color for clarification.
No. Right, this right here.
So we could add it technically and easier to read, we could add it as an appendix and leave the black one in place for consistency.
Yes.
But what's the voters vote on?
So this right here is what the voters are voting on. And it's fine when it's a twenty-four by thirty-six and you can see it, but when you reduce it to eleven by seventeen, this crosshatch in here becomes solid red.
Okay.
And so.
But the twenty-four, thirty-six is on the PDF or not?
I think it's probably all the reduced sizes. So the geography is no different.
It's just the color, the color coded, so. Yeah, well, that was sort of a question.
Yeah.
It wasn't clear from your answer, so I apologize.
Oh, okay, alright.
But it wasn't, so that's why I was trying to get it clear.
Yes.
So it is, so basically, I think the easiest way would be is that what's approved there, but we can also add a different appendix that says same map, but with different color coding for easier reading as an addendum after the fact.
Well.
Because that's not really what's approved. What's approved is what was put out for the public hearing.
And, and it's fine if we approve that for, and, and I think that that's fine because there is no change to the shape or the size that's in there. I just showed it. I, I wanted people to see it because there was a comment at the last meeting that it was hard to read and so I, I just put up a map. It's not changing what's in the plan, but this is just for ease, this is what it is. But that's the map that's in there, that's the map that's gonna get approved. And um, and at its full size, it's fine. And.
Go ahead, too.
Yeah, I do it true. Could you do it like, just zoom in on the section that's hard to read, keeping the map as whatever we presented to the public, but then also add a zoom in section of just that area that's really hard to read as a bigger.
Yeah, I think we're gonna add, we're gonna be able to add different notes if the denim after approved.
Right.
We're gonna say additional clarification, addendum number two. This is a blown up of the area that was approved on the map, so people can see it. I like that idea.
Yeah.
So we can blow up those, that one in the, in the commercial zone out at Midtown.
You?
That way people could really see the property.
Yeah.
So being, I don't, that's a great idea.
Alright. That's, that works, Rachel, all this discussion.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
He doesn't have his last questions at this point.
Did you have something?
I do have more questions since if we're at question Q and A.
Before we close. Oh, yeah, no, I just didn't, sorry. I'm sorry, I can't always see everybody.
So I do have some questions, but in looking through a lot of them, I think most of them are going to be able to be answered today. They're more in the long-term process of it, but I will spit each of them out so that if anybody has an answer to them. Um, so obviously, first and foremost, the vision and direction. Um, how will the new plan balance preserving Rangeli's small-town character with the push for more housing, tourism, and economic diversification?
So the way that, um, so that's a good question. And, and this approach is looking at what planners would call infill development. So um, there's no, there are larger lots in the village that would, would then have the capacity to maybe create a new plot or maybe to add a duplex or something here and there. As opposed to going in and clearing a hundred acres of land and putting in a new development. So the focus here was to stick, was to, was to try and create incentives by allowing a lower minimum lot size to go in the village area where you have public water, where you have public sewer, where you can walk to school, where you can, you know, walk to a lot of different things as opposed to large developments. But you can still do large developments and one of the recommendations is to revisit the clustering provisions. Um, because what I heard in the course of the review is that the cluster provisions, the way they're set up right now, they don't really work and there's not, and so there's no incentive to use them. And what clustering means is that you, you take a large piece of land and you figure out what your, what, how many lots you can get on that. And then, so you get a number, and let's say you can get twenty-five lots on it. Rather than have large lots and you kind of cookie cutter up all the land, you can make smaller lots and you can go as small as twenty thousand square feet if you're on septic systems and cluster them all in one area. So you have shorter roads, so less stormwater runoff. And the remaining land can stay open and it can still be an active woodlot, or it can still be an active farm. Or it can be um, open space for recreation.
Or wildlife.
Or wildlife, all things that are consistent with Rangeli. And so the, you know, the, the hope is that if it happens, we're, we're talking about a transfer of development program. And what that is, is you can take, if someone had a woodlot, say, out in, you know, out in the a rural area, could take the development rights off of it. So that means you could still forest, you can still use it for forestry or you can still use it for agriculture, um, but you can't build on it. And, and that's forever. You don't get to get it back in ten years, you know, it's like once you sell them, you sell those rights and once you sell them, they're not yours anymore. And then someone else can buy them and that would give them the ability to make something a little bit denser in the village. And so it's a concept that's been around for a very long time. It's hard to, it's hard to make it work. But it could have some, I, I think it could work at Rangeli because everybody knows everybody and everybody knows who's, who owns what and and so um, so there are provisions in the plan for things like that also. So um, but I think really the biggest thing is more of the infill development and because that's scattered, that's where it, and, and it's uh, because it's scattered, it's also just gonna happen a little bit at a time. And here and, you know, rather than concentrated in certain areas. And by doing it that way and allowing for that, for those opportunities, um, I think it, it, it helps to preserve the character. Is it growth? Absolutely. Is it change? Yes. But it's um, it's more of a measured incremental change rather than having great big new developments coming in.
Chris?
Plus to speak to that, one of the reasons that we tried to focus on where uh, the sewer and the water systems already were because one, that uh, provides a consistent product that's out there versus additional wells or additional septic systems, as we all know that especially when you get near the lakes and all that part, I mean, if you watch the news today, they were talking about part of the septic system's causing all the problems on the coast, those type of things. I think if we went back and looked, the number one thing, and this is my dealing with the state for eighteen years about phosphorus and all that stuff, the biggest offenders of phosphorus that ends up there are these age-old septic systems. So we thought if we encourage more development in the areas. So we thought if we encourage more development in the areas where there's already septic water, one or the other or or close by the boat, the one that encourages, we've already made there's been significant investments made into the wastewater systems and the water systems in recent years that there's ability for capacity there to still take on additional business. Uh, the impact fees come into play, uh, those type of things that we can encourage the development in that area. Also, don't forget building two thousand three keep in the place where it's an additional dwelling unit opportunities that are out there. And people are starting to take advantage of that there, so providing these tools is encouraging those ADUs to happen where there is walkability, those type of things. Number one thing we heard back from the public is from the business owners saying there isn't those in-law apartments, there isn't those type of things where our employees can afford to stay in there. Some employers have been able to have the means to step up to buy properties and convert them and do those type of things, we've seen that around, but not every small business owner has that ability to do that. So we were thinking, let's encourage in the marketplace some tools that will allow that. It also allows to, going back to what we talked about in healthcare session about um, aging in place, that that allows those adult parents, some of us are dealing with that now, where you have a parent that's starting to age, that really can't be on their own, but sure as hell don't wanna go sit in a nursing home or something like that, and wanna try to find that balance. Plus also, which I thought was brought up great, was Nancy was talking about at the uh, last hearing about trying to create some incentives where we can encourage, uh, what's happening in Rumpert and some of the other towns, where we can encourage uh, an elderly facility to get built in Rangelay proper so that if one person has to go into a facility, that the other person doesn't have an hour to hour and fifteen minute drive. Sometimes an hour and a half, depending on what work they're doing on Route Four and Twenty-Seven and Seventeen, to be able to go see their their spouse. So these are the things we're thinking of, the tools that need to happen in order to allow that, the density bonuses by being encouraging that development along the current systems that we have. Is it a big change?
Yes.
Is it going to be, it's gonna be some challenges there, but I have full faith in um, our uh, elected officials and our appointed officials on the ordinance review and those type of things to be able to put the other pieces in place, because remember, the comp plan is merely the skeleton, the backbone, the ten thousand foot view. You folks have to fill in the rest of the pieces as we go forward. And I think we've got a great set of skills all the way down to code enforcement that can provide that. And as you know, um, your assistant code enforcement officer was a member of the board and ad hoc was your code enforcement, so we were trying to address some of the things to give those tools to be able to go forward. And uh, it is a bit of a change, but I think it's gonna work in the right direction because we're going to see growth. But I have found in my experience with being involved with developments for about twenty years almost now, is that if you provide the developers some tools, which makes it more cost efficient to work in certain areas versus others, they'll cling to those areas because it just just the math works better in order to make those things work. And that's the biggest concern we we hear is this affordability and on the housing piece. And I think this may be how we solve some of that, because there are some parcels in there that um, I think could get developed that will will meet that, the walkability, the density, those type of things. So um, that's where I, if you look into the underlying rationale, like to me, I think that's what drives it. Other members can say for wrong, but I think that's what.
Thanks, Chris. Did you have more? I thought you did.
I do, man, I'm so sorry.
That's what, no, don't be sorry, that's what it's for.
This I know is, there's future conversations to have, a lot of this is not questions that can be answered this evening, but I think they're pertinent questions, questions that need to be asked as somebody who reviewed both side-by-side, these are the ones I came up with and or that somebody approached me with, so I just wanted to put them out there. Um, even if it's just to put something in your hat or future so that you know this is, these are the questions that I've been hearing um, and have myself. Uh, what criteria will the town use to decide between sometimes competing goals, like protecting natural resources versing versus expanding development or renewable energy? So again, if there's no answer to it now.
So, well, no, I I can take a stab at that, I can take a stab at that. Um, one of the recommendations is to come up with site plan review standards. And those standards would be any commercial development would have to meet them, and that's how you balance the natural resources. You have, you have standards in place, you use the state standards and have them in place. And what the plan also does is it recommends a review process by an engineer to make sure that those standards are actually being met. And it also includes on the ground inspection by an engineer to make sure that things were built according to the plan. Because every time you have a little bit of gravel or soil or whatever getting washed away, it has got all sorts of stuff attached to it and that's, and when that gets into a water body, that's where you start getting the the problems with the water quality. So so that's how you balance the two. Is is having that the rules apply to everyone and so there's review of the plans as well as inspection on the ground during construction. And there's a whole process that goes along with that, that that is not borne by the, so it's not borne by the taxpayers, that that's borne by the developer, the cost of that is borne by the developer. And by doing that, it's an incentive for the developer to do it right and do it right the first time.
Laura?
Only, it seems like you've touched base on the planning of the plan calling for the increasing density near the sewer. And ordinance changes, I assume that that's gonna require a lot of changes to chapter thirty-eight. Um, significant changes to chapter thirty-eight. Um, and at which time, when we address the changes to chapter thirty-eight, we can talk about how to avoid overburdening the infrastructure and altering the neighborhood characters at that time.
Yeah, I think we could draft, the ordinance committee can find that balance, working with the select board on that. We did, we wanted to just provide the option of the tool for that. The ordinance committee can narrow that scope or expand it accordingly.
And I know that we talked about um, throughout the document, affordable housing is discussed. Um, how how is the town going to be able to ensure housing is truly affordable for local workers and young families, not just second home buyers? I mean, what?
There's definitely not an answer tonight for that question.
I don't know if there's an answer.
I actually think there's, one of the ways it's gonna be able to be solving that is by the density structures and those pieces where the town has the ability uh, to allow a higher density if there's some um, units that are built in that direction. So you'll have that ability with the plan uh, to do that based on how you draft the ordinances. And you can incentivize that, that's done in um, larger municipalities, for instance, city of Portland, they're working on a couple of the skyscraper stuff, and they said, okay, we can allow you to do this much in market as long as you provide some uh, attainable uh, pieces in the other part. So I think, I think that that's something that can be covered through that and given the proper tools to the planning board uh, to do that as well as, you know, any kind of contract setting or whatever can can also spell that out to an additional detail.
And one other, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just have a comment too, Ethna, um, in regards to the increased density in that area, it's not, it what it does is allows property owners to perhaps put an ADU or another, you know, to buy their lot and put another house on, so you're not gonna get the impact that you would if people were putting up subdivisions in the woods, basically, which is a lot of times what second homeowners want, is they want the two and a half acre type of situation. Um, having ADUs or the ability to do an in-law apartment or an additional little home on the parcel will allow certain people that have been here for a very long time and live in the village to, you know, pay their property taxes or stay in their home. And then when you increase the market um, volume in terms of rentable units, at any economist would say that the more that's out there, the more, you know, the softer the price can be. So it's, you know, supply and demand, basically, at work. So and I don't think that's gonna happen all at once, but over the course of the life of this plan, ten years, you might be able to get enough infills so that people can stay in their homes and you get some type of worker-renter situation. And they're not gonna, you know, if everyone can do what they want, but I would assume that if the woman that's retired and has lived in town for her entire life says, oh, I can build this and get another thousand dollars a month, and that's gonna completely help me pay my taxes and I have a little extra money on the side after the construction costs. That's that's what's happened in a lot of other tragedies too. And in those situations where there's some sort of government subsidy to really bring the cost down, which there, you know, if the cost is truly gonna be affordable and meet the state definition of that, there usually, it usually requires some sort of subsidy. Um, in that case, what the plan recommends is working with housing authority, they would have been called housing authorities a while back, now they tend to be nonprofits and their focus is all about preserving the affordability, because you're absolutely right. You have to be able to, there are standards. There are standards on income and assets and all of those things that you need to know so that you don't, so that A, you don't have, somebody moves into that and then they turn around and sell it three months later and they recoup the the subsidy, otherwise known as windfalls, you know, you wanna stop those. Um, you you wanna preserve the the affordability long term. And so that's what working with either either Rangelay could create one or there's one over in the Carabasit Valley, you know, become a member of that one so that there's someone there to have the that oversight and who knows what the rules are.
And your uh, your deed restrictions can help with that too, with the other agreements it put in. I know there's a community in Bar Harbor and a couple others where there's a CPI adjustment that's there that a price, there's a maximum price that something can be sold at uh, which limits that windfall.
Right.
Option is tied to the original development and then how it how it ages, so that way somebody doesn't get a huge incentive and then even ten years or fifteen years later gets this big windfall.
Right.
So unfortunately, a lot of the state funding that was doing that, really attainable housing, that sixty thousand, I think, that was there and a couple others, that has dried up.
Yeah.
But I think we we can work with and the goal is that the comp plan will allow us some flexibility that um, that those things, as the latest, greatest things pop up, we'll have the ability to take place in those and not be in some stuffs based on what exists now and the debt trust.
Mark? Uh, to the previous conversation, John, I mentioned the site review committee with uh, engineer oversight of the plan and also on the ground. At what part of the process, what does this get initiated?
Well, it it all gets established during the review of the project.
At the planning board level.
So the planning board level, plans get, plans get developed, you know, and what I'm talking about here is like road construction and um, and and stormwater facilities and all the various things that you need to do to do a larger development, either residential or commercial. So that happens at the planning board level. And that gets reviewed by an engineer to make sure that the standards are met because they're very specific and they would be looking at all the phosphorus calculations and the to make sure that all of the standards are being met. And then what happens is you do these performance guarantees. And a performance guarantee is something that the developer puts up and that performance guarantee, a lot of times is in the form of a letter of credit or it can be in cash. And and that's the developer saying, I am going to build this according to the plan. And the town is gonna hold that money while you do that. And as you get things done periodically, they'll release some of that money. Um, and there will also be inspection fees to have, you know, you you all meet before before any work starts happening on the property.
But who can, Brian, who puts the site review committee together?
The the town, the board of selectmen would, so it would be the planning board.
Not the code enforcement, sometimes that go to the code enforcement officer.
No, that would be the planning.
They usually go to the code enforcement officer.
Right, but they would have to bring it, they'd have to bring something like that. What she's talking about is third-party review as well as bonding.
Right.
And all those type of things would be a condition upon where something comes into the code enforcement, they said, okay, this is going to planning board. And I I don't know of a case where it would be that the code enforcement would just arbitrarily do the bonding part or those pieces also go, that would go to planning board.
Would determine that, if the code enforcement, I'm wondering if the code enforcement officer would recommend site review at the initial application.
Well, they will, if once our comp plan, the revised comp plan's in place, there'll be the guidance there to say, you know, if you're doing these type of things, we should make sure that these go with, go to site plan because.
Scope related too.
Yeah, and it depends on, right, it's an existing subdivision where they're adding things, anytime there's gonna be a density bonus increase, those type of things, that's gonna come to the planning board to get reviewed and then the determination will then be whether or not it needs that additional site review and the third third-party stuff. But that will also come into play when you're talking with public works and those type of things, especially when roads are getting turned over. If they are to get turned over to the town, those type of things.
And you add. It all sounds good, I I would just wonder what the mechanism was to see that it actually happened. Because a lot of these things that sound good don't actually ever get implemented.
So so, yeah, that all gets written into the site plan review ordinance. And in that site plan review ordinance, one of the sessions is applicability. Who does this apply to? What projects does it apply to? Very cut and dry.
And this comp plan provides that.
It makes the suggestion that happen.
Yes, again, back to the skeleton.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, that's right.
Last question.
Yeah, no, that's alright, no, I mean, everybody knows this and Chris says it often, the comp plan is a tool, it's a it's a living tool.
Guide not ending.
A guy, yeah, a guide to get someplace and then once things have.
One's gonna sit on yours.
Excuse me, once things have to be implemented, then Joe and us and the other people that get paid to do this stuff will will implement it, go ahead.
Uh, so last question, what are the top three most urgent priorities as far as this board is concerned?
In regards to the plan?
Mm-hmm, in the new plan, what are the top three urgent priorities?
Well, we'd be, don't tell me what to say, geez, do you wanna run this meeting? Housing has been the, has been the the top priority, in my opinion, since we started this questionnaire up at the school, when you presented the uh, so that that's one for me, what do you guys?
Definitely be number one on mine is affordable housing, we have some starting next year and that plays out well enough that we can leapfrog on another project after that.
I'll speak to the, housing, I was gonna get everybody's mind frame, I think, but you look at, so we get this uh, kind of rezoning in town and the the idea of not, the smaller developments um, sections, what I'd be afraid of in that mechanism is for that pro, that woman that's been in her house for fifty, sixty, seventy years and the market here, obviously, we know houses selling and selling and selling. So once this is, once this is in place, the lot next door sells, lot over here sells, and all of a sudden now, once she had a backyard with I'm gonna say two acre property, and all of a sudden this two acre property has two, another house in it, this house, you know, so that that just that change for those, Rangelay disappears really quickly, when you've been here for fifty years, and all of a sudden there's two more houses popping up in your proximate of your back lawn. Now, obviously, property developers or or owners have that ability, which I think it's a great thing and it allows that needed uh, price point for 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 the market. Um, I would hope within that same housing um, concern is you look at infrastructure of Rangelay, it has to adapt at the same time. We already have, we already have infrastructure in place that is not gonna we won't handle a a large influx much longer as we are right now. See.
You refer to sewer.
Sewer, I'm I'm gonna say sewer and transfer station probably at that point too, but those two are those are two large. Facilities that would have to understand. Once you look at additional facilities within downtown proper or sewer and water connections, that capacity changes very quickly. And then on that same idea for sewer. Climate has changed, which is being addressed in this or discussed in this, our shoulder seasons are are much longer. So it doesn't allow you to process material like you were able to before, so looking at development in that property to then come and. Understand storage or processing in a different manner. Uh, and a third for me would be. I I don't have a third one right now.
Claire?
Um, I just think uh we're we're at a tipping point here in Rangel, like with the growth, I mean, it's. We are, it's a slippery slope that we are kind of riding right now and I think that. We've got to really focus and buckle down and make sure that we we keep, as Wendy said, you know, remain. What we are, this community, this wonderful, but yet still grow with how many people are wanting to be here and um. I think that a lot of these new. New uh updates are are crucial.
Thank you very much for your for your work on this, you you guys have done a ton of good work, needed work.
There's a lot of pages.
Yeah, yeah. Joe, should we roll directly into sides if anybody, unless anybody has anything else?
I have one last comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
So. I worked on one of these that was a pretty significant impact uh down in the town of Window when I lived there before I moved up here. And the biggest problem that I saw after it got done, they set up a committee of like twenty eight people to do the implementation. I recommend that you look at some kind of an implementation. Uh, committee to continue on, when we originally set it up, it was. It was a comprehensive plan implement and implementation committee. Right, and like, yeah, we dropped it down to just doing the comp plan. But I would suggest your next step is is that you possibly look at an implementation. Committee that works to at least try to have these things, because I've seen ninety nine out of a hundred go sit on the shelf. And nothing happened.
Sure.
And I think we've already talked about some of the risks and challenges here. That I think it's important that that get kicked off to the next level.
We proved that in our own.
Yeah, no, I I would agree with that.
Twist answer.
Right.
And then and then um. At least yearly ha- have a review with that committee with whoever the board is at the time.
Right, so if things pass on September, I would suggest that you look right into doing that in October to move it to the next step, so.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, because. Quickly, weeks become months that my biggest complaint when we did the plan in two thousand twelve is that we had eighteen months update the ordinances. Nothing happened, I asked several candidates during their, used to do the candidate nights about that, and it never got implemented. And then we got into a legal situation where the comp plan said X, the ordinance said Y, and it opened the door to go all the way to the law court.
Yeah.
I hate to see us repeat history.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Wendy?
I have a little bit of a different opinion about that, um, and just my opinion.
Sure.
But I I've done business in Wyndham too and that was a highly dysfunctional government system there.
It was.
Um, I, what I've seen in multiple communities, especially small towns, is you are the leaders of this town. And I would just think of it at like a business would a strategic plan. And say, you know, you're the chair and you say, all right, you know, we're going into a new fiscal year, let's look at the comp plan. Where are our three, what is every, you know, chi- person's top three ideas, just like. Most of the chairs do when they sit there, they talk to everyone about their top priorities and then you go through the actionable steps in the comp plan. And you, as leaders, say, oh, why don't we try this, we try this, we try this, and you balance it out with the committees. And the groups that have to actually do the heavy lifting and in Rangel, the ordinance committee has an incredible amount of work. So maybe it would be there where you'd have another group that's helping something that's a big cumbersome, you know, body of work, so they have some assistance. But to have a whole other group tell you how to implement the plan for the town that you're running. Personally, just to me, it sounds like an an extra step, that's that's it.
I will just mention that at the last ordinance committee meeting, I approached the subject that the new comp plan was being presented in it. If it was, we were going to have to buckle down and do some extensive work once we got the directives. Keeping in mind that our role is to carry out the policy direction given by the planning board and the selectmen, that is. So the ordinance committee won't be going out and pulling things by themselves because we take our directive from you and the planning board. We did mention that if you'd like us to, once you give us something, we can circle which ones we think we can bang out. Which ones we think we take a little longer, that type of thing, we are more than happy to continue through the process as we have. Every time we get one that's appointed, you know, directed to us to update, we do diligently work on them, so we're looking forward to. Should the plan be adopted?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Just a quick question for you, you guys fully staff on ordinance?
Right now, we do have a vacancy, um, I've mentioned that at the last meeting and I've been putting it out to people that I see downtown. If anybody's interested, there is currently a vacancy on that.
And you said you tried to meet twice a month, but you guys are doing once a month, are you scheduled to meet twice a month?
No, so we are scheduled to meet first and third Wednesday of every month. Um, sometimes based on other folks' individual commitments, there was a little bit of conflict occasionally and we weren't able to get in both. But we do diligently try and put in both meetings, especially when we have something in progress.
Sure, okay.
Chris? Uh, just, I guess I was a clear in my comment on that, the Wyndham model was extremely dysfunctional. It never got to.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, they had twenty eight people, I.
Yeah.
I executed Bieber's Law and left the committee because I was like, this is never gonna get.
Much wider town, but that's a very, very large committee.
Yeah, yeah, so but my point is is that implementation, the next step here is important, however you choose to.
Yes, I I agree.
Of course.
Joe?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you to your previous question, if you think all the commentary is complete with comp plan, I would recommend rolling right into.
Okay. All right, why don't we do that then? Thank you very much, great commentary, great notes.
Thank you.
And yeah, we'll go into the sign portion of this year.
So I have.
Sixteen is a comp meeting?
That's the vote on the comp plan and the sign ordinance.
And that's the only thing that happens that day.
Yes.
Is that at the school?
It'll take place in this room, uh, it opens at eight AM, closes at eight PM.
Thank you.
The moderator will spawn in at seven forty five, we missed that, uh, that wouldn't happen. An absentee ballot is available now, for that, if you wanna grab one.
Okay.
It will just be those two items on the board, it'll be sign ordinance and the comp plan, that's it.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna.
Very much.
So, Mr. Chair, these are primarily uh. Some definitions that have been changed or added in this group sign has been included, animated sign. Changeable sign is a message board with manual changeable letters, a letter you can change electronically. And it's hard for me to read, so if I miss one, it's not intentional. Uh, a sign permit label shall be issued with a sign permit. This is the sign that's been removed from the proposed language under thirty eight ten three. Uh, timeframe for temporary signs is six weeks as opposed to nine days. Uh, municipal facilities is a little further design uh defined under temporary signs, ten, uh, thirty eight ten five three. Safety signs include those signify police, fire, ambulance buildings. Municipal facilities include town offices, public restaurants operated and maintained by municipality. Town parks and cemeteries, numbering congressional markets for those entrance and exits. Uh, under temporary signs on page thirty eight sixty nine, uh, this is a new uh new addition here where the. Uh, Ranji Lake seniors, those banners are allowed to be posted uh for graduating class each year. Uh, temporary sound signs shall be six mile. Under uh point eight on that page, so long as they measure less than one square foot has been removed, that's for window details. Standards and penance has been stricken under point nine on page thirty seventy, thirty eight seventy rather, and one of the other. Uh, important things of note is the um. Calculations for business and commercial signs, so. Uh, if there if there's more than one uh business on a lot, just explains how that will be calculated, there's an example here. So the four businesses operating on the same lot, thirty two, which is the base, and then each additional gets twelve square feet, so thirty two square feet plus twelve plus twelve plus twelve. Equals the total number of square footage that can be allowed on that lot. Uh, that was something that uh was of high importance from code enforcement. My board of prosecutors, the ordinance committee, they've worked on that. Uh, light from externally illuminated signs shall be arranged so that no direct rays of light, et cetera, that's been stricken under point one two. If I'm missing something, let me know. And non-conforming signs, last page of this. Edit that's been looked at by legal, there's some, some new non-conforming language there at the end. That sound familiar? Those are the changes, uh, thirty eight, chapters, chapter thirty eight, ten signs.
Um. I'll ask Ethno real quick because you went fast and I was kinda um. Thinking about things, the, when we spoke at last meeting. Did we say we were gonna take up internally illuminated signs during the i- in the lighting ordinance? I heard him say something about.
Not in the lighting ordinance, we are going to take it up as a different section.
June, correct?
The intent is to take it up as a different section within the sign ordinance, but not until June. What we wanted to do is clean up the existing language and make sure that we were doing things that were. In compliance with the code enforcement officer's position and the planning board's position and then run through the. The bad language that was in there, any redundant or conflicting language that was in there and clean that up, and we want that to pass.
Yeah, that's right, I just, I just, and I thought so, but I I thought he had said something about it, I thought you'd done the work and I was like, I thought we were waiting.
So the intent is to, we do have draft language to take up about a term internally illuminated, but we do not plan to have that ready until the annual town meeting.
Yep. Sam had talked last time about adding an appendix, you said it would be best to have it in the permit, and he said we should throw that to Breck, I'm just curious if if that was mentioned to him.
The visual aid.
The visual aid.
We have discussed it and I've asked for that to be worked out.
Okay, that's all.
Anybody on the board have anything? All right, I think um we can close this, close this public hearing, Joe at uh six oh two PM. We'll be going with the rest of the meeting. Uh, conflict of interest, if you have one, speak up at the time that you discover it, any adjustments to the agenda, Joe?
None, Mr. Chair.
I know adjustments, public to speak on a non-agenda item, Mark.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark Borga, resident, uh, at the last meeting, uh, someone raised the question of uh. The testing of water in the swi- swim area and uh. Jim asked me, I mentioned that I had seen on news different towns and things like that, that uh and newspapers that post that stuff. And Jim asked me if I could look into that a little bit and see what other towns do that, so. I didn't get too carried away, but I looked into it a little bit and uh, so uh, there's a Maine healthy beaches program. And uh, so. Coastal's, public coastal swim beaches are monitored for indicative bacteria during the beach season. Which is from Memorial Day to Labor Day using EPA approved quality standards. And uh, so in that. Uh, there's sixty participating beaches in the program, uh. Spanning two hundred miles from Kittery to Acadia National Park, so all the beaches, pretty much from Acadia right down to Kittery. Are involved in that and they do that testing twice a week through the thing there. And then uh, I looked into uh, that's all coastal.
Sure.
Uh, so I asked about uh. Inland towns and it says many inland towns in Maine test water quality of public swimming areas, but it's not a statewide mandate. Uh, and so uh. It spit out that the city of Auburn tests their water, uh, at Outback Beach on Lake Auburn. Falmouth tests their water, uh, Bridgestone, Harrison, Denmark, Maples Water and Sweden. Test theirs and then uh, there's a thirty mile river watershed association that monitors the water and that's in Chesterville, Fayette and Mount Vernon. So uh, those are, that's what I found about that, so I just thought I'd hear that.
I was, I was just gonna say, and I like part, uh, last park commission meeting, it does say in the rules and regs, swim at your own risk, we talked about that too. Putting, excuse me, putting signs up or something, but that's in the, that's in the rules.
We usually have that sign, we, I assume we still do have that sign.
Well, maybe. I take that, I mean, that that's a broad, a broad.
When we redid the park, we might have, that might not have, it it was always there, I remember that, um. Is this something we wanna ask the health officer to look into for next year? I'm asking the board. Is, cause the health officer would be the person that. Or no?
I would say to post anything, but.
I I would think, uh, Mr. Chair, if the board are interested in this, I would recommend developing a policy on on testing. Water at the beach and I'm not proposing that you should, should or should not test the water down there.
Yeah.
But if you were going to, as as manager, I would want some clear delineation.
Right, right, okay.
And and health officer certainly would be a good resource, but I don't see that that person would be involved in the actual testing.
Yeah. No, 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 I didn't, I'm I'm at the, I'm at the program, looking into the program, that Mark's speaking, or a program or. Or someone reaching out to another lake town that does this and ask them how it works for them.
We certainly, I I could certainly get new information from the towns, how they do it, what their rationale was, if they have a policy, um.
Yeah.
Does the Heritage Trust do anything? I mean, I know they watch when boats go in and like make sure that they don't bring in anything.
Mill foil testing, yeah, but.
Do they do any testing of the of the waters themselves?
I can ask that question, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair, but I could certainly ask if the trust does.
I guess the only other thing I'd say too is that, I mean, legal before has said, we shouldn't do it, so you might just wanna reach out to legal to. See what.
Yeah, well, let's, let's do.
Needs to change.
Do a little bit of digging, I mean, this year, we're we're gonna be late for it anyways.
Yes, season's over.
Right, yeah, yeah, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And uh, it seemed like, just in the quick thought I had about it while I was reading that stuff. To add to your discussion, it seemed to me like the uh, if you, if that was something you folks were interested in. Seemed to be like a coordinated effort between the health officer and the head of uh parks and recreation, you know, they'd have to kind of work together to. Figure that, figure that out.
Yeah, just so uh.
Yep.
Relevant comment is, if we we do move forward testing, it has to be, it has to be somewhere in-house because you, you can't, you can't send it out. Yeah, water, well, water sample doesn't last long enough for the, the chloroform count doesn't count unless you get it within six hours, six to eight hours. So you can't send it to clear water or wherever else, so it has to, it has to be tested somewhere.
You'd have, you'd have to drive the sample to one of.
Drive them and have them do it, whatever, so just so that's, that's a mechanism we have to think about.
Right.
Um, and then that's a set twenty four hours in the incubators, so it develops and blah, 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 and they get their fecal count, if you, if you look at just the fecal.
Yep.
Does the school plant have a lab lab?
They do have a. They do have a lab, some of this, I'm not gonna speak to, if I'm not relevant with all that stuff right now, some of that equipment is aging.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure on the tolerances anymore in in some of their equipment, um, but it was. Hundred percent true, it was once tested up at that facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But of course, another thing that that would need to be looked at, you're talking about the policy and operational elements of it, it would be a budget.
Correct.
Uh, that must be looked at too, I can give you. Introductory look at it at the next meeting and then decide if I wanna pursue it further.
Yeah.
The timing's good if you did wanna pursue it because we're coming up on budgets.
Oh, Mark?
The second thing, I have a second.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
And uh, I didn't know. If any of you folks have been following in the. Newspapers there about uh. Policing with uh. Wilton and Jay and uh, how they're. Going about it, you know, they both look at independent police departments, they look at a collaborative one and now they've. Formed a committee and they're looking at uh. sheriff each town independently and also as a combined thing and stuff like that, and I just found it kind of interesting, the process they were following it, and I just thought if you if you looked, looked at it and just read it up, because there's been like, I think, four or five different articles over the last couple of months on it. And I just thought you might find it beneficial to see how, you know, they're going about it, you know?
Yes, okay, I hadn't heard. All right, next up, we have James Gendasi, the report from the Parks Commission.
Thanks, got lots going on down there.
All right.
Really good. Last time I came, we were talking about the lake and library loop that we've been working on for about five years, that is finalized, with the exception of maybe putting in some flower gardens along the way next year. The new docks are in down at the dock, down at the town park this year, which has been a nice addition from who I've heard that is utilizing them, they, they like them. Uh, let's see, the last meeting, we met with the police chief. We've been having some issues with the boat parking down by the launch, and we're looking at possibly implementing some new rules and regs. Some new wording in the ordinance to work on leaving the spots there for the trailers, and then maybe opening them up to par, to the public afternoon time or something along those lines. We're also digging into the, to the rules and regs in general, there's some things that need to be changed. Some behavior that's happening at the park the last few years that we're trying to curtail, so we're gonna be putting a little bit of some more teeth into the rules and regs down there. And the big one, obviously, got passed at town meeting last year was money for a gazebo, and we're probably leaning more towards a pavilion now, like a twelve by twenty-four type pavilion that can double as a place for events to take place, but it also gives Pat an area to go if, if it should rain during one of his programs at the park. Give some shelter down there. We've been looking at different companies and getting pricing on material, and we're still moving along through that process. Also be looking to add electricity to the, to the pavilion, obviously, but adding cameras up there to keep an eye on basketball, tennis courts, and some, some blind spots that we don't have eyes on right now, but.
Yeah, you getting anything to say?
Pretty much it.
Yeah.
I think, so that's, that's it.
All right, right, Keith's in deep thought over there.
I, I, I am and I'm not, it just, like, I nothing bad, and, and, so my, my, my thought in a way is, today in society, we are constantly under some kind of surveillance mechanism, whether it's cell phones or properties, whatever, and I'm just trying to think at a, at a, at what point is the not currently, not with this pavilion, but at what point does a public piece of property become unattractive with this camera, 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 and I just I'm not saying that bad approach is going to be, I'm just, and I know there's things that are happening that need to be have that footage and that, for that evidence, and, and for, you know, for the level, I'm just afraid of becoming too invasive or, you know, I just hope there's a way we can maintain a minimalist approach to, to the view, the view scope. And I know cameras have come a long way outside, just just kind of terrifies me a little bit.
Yeah, keep, we'll keep that in mind as we move along.
I, I'm not complaining, I think it's a positive.
You notice the ones at the the bathrooms?
If I didn't know where they were, I probably wouldn't, but understood, just understanding now, you know, having the background with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also talked about probably adding one of the quasic too, to keep an eye, because there's been some kids with scooters and whatnot on the tennis courts down there, and marking those surfaces up, so. It's just kind of. Kind of stinks when we invest all that money, all without a doubt, without all those improvements, but that's basically it, so, yeah, we've got lots going on.
All right.
Thank you.
Good.
All right.
And we have the, the minutes from that last park commission meeting in our package, as well as the planning board, and then we have our minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of our August eighteenth meeting.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith. Discussion, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the liquor license balloon launch.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Keith. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the liquor license for Sarge's.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. I'm looking for the, make a motion, I have the town manager sign the winter road maintenance unit, Dallas plantation. Motion by Jim, second by Sam, discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
That fee change, as we look at economics and everything, as, you know, maintenance costs go up or anything, or just kind of just.
Turns out to just be a wash.
Just a wash, right?
Roughly the same.
Next up is the computer reserve, Joe.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking for up to thirteen thousand from the technology reserve, that's about sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is for planned maintenance, around five-year location, some of these are a little over five years. There's basically laptops, desktops, certain personnel, we do have this thing, who asks what. If they're, and the reason I'm asking for up to, this is a project that Tracy's been working on for me, there are some of these that maybe we can sneak a little bit more time out of. If we can't, I want to make sure that we can replace everything that needs to be replaced this year.
Like, wait for discussion point two, so just remind me, so do we trade items back in, or we just, we just dispose of them, or? Can't remember.
So it's a very good question, there have been however you answer it, this is the most robust this, this capital plan has been. So we're at a point where we've got everything on the list, and we're at a five-year point where this lot stuff needs to be segwayed out. In my past experience here, there have been some items that really were obsolete and just were kind of given back to the, to the technology company to recycle for us. In this case, I'm glad you brought this up, there are some that may still have some residual value that I may recommend to you, you know, they're sold through the surplus property process, so if, if they're deemed to have any volume, value, I will follow that process. If they're obsolete and, you know, really not worth anything, then they've just recycled in the past, but if there are any that have residual value, I'll come to you with a list and ask for permission to sell those. Or redeploy them elsewhere in the organization, but pretty much everybody's accounted for at this point, everybody that needs technology's got it at this point.
Make a motion to transfer up to thirteen thousand dollars from the computer reserve to upgrade computers on the list that was issued to us.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith, discussion. Mark?
Is there any sensitive information on these hard drives that need to be protected when you go to?
So, and I'm glad that came up too, that's something I didn't mention when we talked, but that's something that I always handle with the I T company. They'll either wipe it or they'll remove it, and give it here, leave it here for the town to manage, so we do handle it as though there's confidential information on them, even though there may not be on some of them. And you assume that there always is.
Actually, Bobby, speak to that, like, I remember recording the information on them and storing them in the vault for a little while until we were able to actually destroy them or have them just, you know, destroyed, so there was a mechanism, or is or was a mechanism in place to record all that stuff.
Just quick suggestion, if they have minimal resale value, the elderly folks across the street maybe need it.
It's a great idea, too.
Just a thought, some of them may need access to them and they don't have the funds to.
That's a thought, yeah.
It's, it's, it'll be up to the board how to dispose of it when it comes to.
Well, Joe, comes back with any kind of value, we can talk, talk about it then. Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Next up, we've got the, no, wait a minute, we need to call the November election.
So moved.
There you go, motion by Jim, second by Sam. All in favor? That motion passes, next up, we got the Parks and Rec vehicle, an old business. When I spoke about this a little bit the other day, Joe, you want to?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, this three fifty, we've talked about it before, we had listed for eighteen thousand, we didn't get any bites on that. I wanted to kind of give a sense of of the board's thoughts on it, it does not have a current inspection sticker on it, on my Fox mechanic recently kind of handle on what it might cost. My plan, this has also been a little bit of time since this has happened, but I want to get it out there that the highway foreman's day-to-day pickup is due for replacement, one that he's driving, I would like to redeploy to the mechanic, so I don't want to put a bunch of time and effort into two, two trucks, I, I'm still of the mindset that we should liquidate this particular vehicle. But I'm curious what your thoughts are on it, I, I put a suggestion out there for maybe, you know, lower it by a certain amount until it sells. As a reminder, I did reach out to the two companies who gave us bids on the new truck, the highway truck, and they they reached around five thousand dollars, I think, for trading, so I know that's not acceptable.
Yeah, that's. We have a rate.
Eighteen, had a list for eighteen, I don't know if you wanted to drop it by a thousand every week or two weeks.
I got something, what do you think?
I was saying, so I want a little, little comparison real quick, because I, this is, I just saw a truck come through, through high dealership. It's a one-year newer, two thousand sixteen F three fifty, this one has a utility body on it. It has ninety-nine thousand miles on it, and it's on the as-is lot, needs rocker, needs rocker rocker panels, cab corners, cab support, front brakes, so it's not inspectable. Um, that's, if you do it the right way, that's considerable money, but they want eighteen thousand for that one. So I'm not against a mechanism to reduce that, try to get out the door, I just would have a, a ceiling, or, not a ceiling, or a, a floor where I'm, like, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be like, here we are at especially being a public meeting, and we say we're gonna do X, and often people are gonna anticipate to be like that, that website where you just a little bitter, you know, almost, but I'm, I mean, obviously, we're not getting any, we're not getting any attention and or bites on it at the, at the current price, but I just, again, we are at a I think we're at a good value, in my own opinion, not knowing everything that's currently on with that vehicle. But I know it's, again, had more recent bodywork than that would probably have, as the interior in this one is, that I saw advertised is, is definitely gross.
This is a diesel truck that we have, but it's power stroke, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, i- if we were gonna, if we were gonna go down, this would be my spot, because my thought, if we're gonna go down, go down to fifteen and cap it at twelve, fifteen's like a magic number, increments of five, people tend to buy things. That would be my thought, but I don't want to let it go for less than twelve, I mean, it's, it's a power stroke diesel, how many miles on it?
In the mid-eighties.
It's not even, it'd be broken in when it's got two hundred and twenty on it, go ahead, Mark.
It's currently a time to garage.
Yeah, the, the problem with not getting rid of it, as you know, with things sit, now the brakes are locked up, now this, that, and then but, but I letting go of a, a nice diesel pickup like that for a pit in the side, yeah, that's not okay.
And I have no idea if this one's diesel or not, but anyway, it's kind of just a thought process, and I would, I would agree with these.
Silly question, but what about displaying it out on the lot, you know, like, I don't know how well cars do that way in general, when you put them out and say for sale at, you know, I mean, instead of, maybe somebody locally will be interested in that at fifteen, or, I, I mean, I don't know, just putting it out on the lot.
Yeah, I don't think it's a silly idea at all.
I don't know if that's tacky or.
Like, just one more method of, of advertisement.
I think I would, I would recommend doing it in addition to the biggest.
Correct, yeah, no, I agree, at all, all means possible.
I think anything we can do for local advertising, whether, again, Facebook or all that stuff, I think it's gotta be just that much more beneficial.
But I agree with these, I mean, I'm good to go with fifteen and definitely cap, but.
Yeah, I mean, of course, everybody just heard me say that, so they're gonna offer you as well.
Capping at fifteen right now.
Well.
I think I got, I heard go to fifteen, cap at twelve.
And I say worst-case scenario, you just put a plow back on it, put the transfer station and just use it as your truck.
Right, yeah, if we don't sell it, it's still very usable.
That's been the default thought in my mind.
Yeah, okay. So is that, so moved. That's what that is. Jim's motion, Sam's second, all in favor? Motion passes. All right, new business, chapter thirty-five traffic ordinance.
So, Mr. Chair, there's just one item to follow up here, the last time you spoke about, concern about the fifteen-minute zone corner plate at Main Street. That is not referenced in here.
Did you need a motion? I make a motion to remove the fifteen-minute parking sign on Lake Street.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Motion passes.
If there's any, if there's any other follow-up on, on the traffic ordinance, this is one that Ford after notice and carry. I did hear the park commission update earlier, said there was some sign sign language being discussed there. Discuss this a little further with the chief in terms of penalties and so forth, so if there's any interest in bringing that back, let's let me know.
We, we should definitely, after our meeting this month, be able to send that back up to the board, what, what we think our changes should be, so.
Okay.
That would, that would definitely take.
Do we need to involve the ordinance committee at all for this?
Wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to have them chime in on it.
Let's, let's do it the, the right way, send it up and send it back, we'll try not to spend a long, long time on it for really folks on one part.
And I saw one other thing, section thirty-five, six thirteen, backing up on Main Street, there is no more diagonal parking, so we might want to just scratch that out.
I mean, it's, it's, I believe, it's, it's illegal to back up on a public way anyways, Main Street is a public way, a state public way. Russ, I mean, one of the, the police here to back me up on that, but I think that's actually a law.
It's definitely not a best practice.
Yeah.
Hey, I got one other thing, I had a phone call from the president of the Ransley ATV Club, and he said that the gentleman that rents down from Revit Up was leaving four-wheelers in the parking lot on Depot Street, and we have a sign in that says no overnight parking, but there's nothing in this ordinance that references Depot Street, or references just the town parks, so.
I mean, shouldn't it say town property?
I mean.
I thought it was all of your town parking lots, so that's interesting.
That's, unless I missed it, but I just, it, it says overnight parking, it says the town parks is all I saw.
Without a permit, you can overnight park on any of you guys.
Yeah.
Well, man, this ordinance is at the use.
So that's, that's just something, I guess that's all I got.
Yeah, okay.
Curiosity, with the development of Depot Street, is anything gonna change on that lot once, before the language is changed or after? Like, any idea, once you become, you know, that, development of that property, the, the parking stalls, whatever, I mean, obviously, we still have to have permitted access for overnight parking, but is there ever gonna be a thought process in there to allow a different, not different use, but before we put language into something, is it cart before the horse versus whatever?
Because of what we're doing with that parking lot?
I, I don't, so the back part of Depot Street is gonna remain essentially the way it is.
Right.
Front part is going to be developed for car, car stalls and so forth. You, you may want to impose a, a time limit on those, you know, so people are spending the whole day there, I mean, it's, it's, that's up to you.
Personally, I don't think you want overnight parking on any property. Yeah, right.
I, I do, I do agree with that, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
You know, at the bottom of Dallas Hill?
Yeah.
Overlook, that's, that's state.
All right, I guess we're all set with new business correspondence.
That's just a thank you, Mr. Chair, they, they got a we sent a nice thank you letter, so I thought, Chair, pretty.
You look like you're getting ready to read the whole thing.
I can, if you'd like.
I don't think it's necessary unless the public really wants to hear it. All right. Nothing to be read into record, I guess, to report, Joe.
Okay, so we've got some calendars here, calendar items. If you're a public hearing at this point for the sixteenth. Then you move into the November election timeline, which you've also called for that. It will be, you know, so the public knows there will be more details coming on that. Strike a tentative deal on it. So there's the, the deadline for that, all the deadlines for that. Last day issue, US balances November first, and then the meeting is on the. Fourth, as you called earlier. Other business, so there is a follow-up to the MMA enforcement grant, including the email and the package. The number was five fifty to talk about last night, twenty-five percent. Portion that is gone up from fifty to twenty bucks. Savings on our plan. So that, that's a good question. That's a great answer. Get accredited. The question about screenings. Those will be in centralized location, probably firing, because that's, but most of the folks will be close to. I'm okay if it's on town time. I'm, I'm fine with that. Probably will be on town time. And we've, Rich and I, Chief and I have talked about making sure that we. Put a recurring item in the budget for your review each year for continuing. So I think that covers all the follow-up on that item. More good news here, the workers' comp on dividend payment. This is related to our. From last year, it's a check we get back from them based on our performance rating, which is tied to. Claims that happen. It's also, you know, full disclosure, it's a little bit higher because we now have full staff, so we're taking in more than we have for a while, so. Should disclose that also, but in any case, it's a pretty good, pretty good refund to the town. I feel like there's some other notes, my memoir on, tell you about. PD ran the cupboard. I have put out a, in our people's requirement, no action required on that tonight. I just didn't want to sneak up on you with it. We, we undershot the cost to connect that generator to all of the facilities. And I've asked for a bid alternate in it to connect that to the transfer station. So I don't know if that'll be affordable or not, but I've asked for that. Byway projects is out to bid. Opening will be September fourth, so you'll know more about that at the end of the month. So the highway group has rented a large boom mower to go out, get some of the places they can't get with the day-to-day model. There was a gentleman in here from the Forest Service today who mentioned how good Mingo looked. He said he must have a machine up there. And line cleaning is coming up. Everybody knows the drill on that. Make sure toilet seats are down. Be prepared, and there's more details.
There's always, there's always somebody that gets caught. I got a quick question. I saw the grant sheet there. How are we doing with the electronic locks?
So. We are, Rich was working on lining that up. He was on the phone with them the other day, trying to get that scheduled. So I don't have a date when that's going to happen, but he's certainly working on it, trying to get it rolling. The deadline is coming up. To have something in place for that.
Good, good.
It's being worked on. And that's, that's all I have.
Anybody on the select board have anything they want to share?
I went to the, the childcare facility. And that was really, really cool what they've got going on there and.
Quite a place.
End of this month?
I was there yesterday. Well, yeah, the tour yesterday, but I was there working yesterday. It's going to be a very nice facility.
They're hoping. I think they're just waiting to get all the stuff in.
They're close. Great. Mr. Chair, one thing I forgot, I apologize, being out of order on this. Casella has agreed to come to your next meeting.
Oh, good.
I emailed the other company and I'm not sure I have the right email address, so I'm going to follow up via phone this week to make sure they have an opportunity.
And that's the next meeting? Make sure you're there, Mark.
And he's, we've already had kind of a preliminary conversation, but I, I will, I will spoil the surprise for you. He was very receptive to the questions I asked.
So maybe we just discuss once already with this, in the same context of conversation. Brothers Casella, Archie's, I know they're, I believe they're under new ownership or management now. But now that there seems to be a more competitive market for trash pickup. Probably should be in the same conversation with those individuals that trash is being picked up and disposed, deposited in the same. Region that they're picking it up from. So maybe not us saying in this, in this meeting context, but I think maybe the, if they're advertising on a Facebook about trash pickup. Maybe we should just give them a, a reminder at the facility that hopefully all your trash is coming from the reason that is your service. Right. So if you're, if you're a true, if you're, if you're a business to trash pickup, this is our ordinance dictating.
I, I think when they come, in case I'm not here, a good question would be, how can they ensure that the trash that they put there came from?
Well, I think that's what generated this, this to happen anyways. But yeah, there is, you're, you're going to be here. You started this, bring your surfboard. All right, anything else? Well, it looks like we've got a couple of executive sessions tonight. Is that right, Joe? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Entertaining a motion to enter to MRSE title on chapter thirteen, subchapter one, section four oh five, succeed acquisition. Real property and economic, economic development.
Motion by Jim, second by Sam. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thanks a lot, folks.
Thank you.
Don't you dare start saying any good stuff till I get back from the bathroom.
I had my hand right up there.
All right, folks, we're out of executive session at six fifty-three PM. With some action to be taken.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that the board authorize town manager to. Design a purchase and sale agreement for a particular parcel of property within the town of Rangely. And work with the town's attorney to do so. In the hopes of securing. Rights to purchase that property.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Keith, second by Sam. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session. MRSE title on chapter thirteen, subchapter one, section four oh five, six F, discussion of confidential records.
Motion by Jim, second by Keith. All those in favor? All right. All right, we're out of our second executive session at seven oh four PM with no action taken. Motion by Jim, second by Sam. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.